February 9th, virtual meeting of the Morrel Memorial Board, Library Board Trustees. I'm John Hall, the Chair, and we're going to be playing technology games, so we're going to hope to do our best. First thing on my list is introductions, and I'm going to just go across my screen. Casey Arjuru, say hi, or wave hi, okay.
Hi, everyone.
George Mikulik, one of our trustees, there he is. Sarah Beg, another trustee. Sarah, say hi, or nod, or wave, or something. Okay. Now, I don't hear Sarah. Oh, well. Marguerite Cummings.
Hello, how are you, everybody?
She's waving, okay. Kate Sheehan.
Hello.
Donna Montgomery. And we're missing our interim trustee, but here is our brand-new library directory, Director Clayton Cheever.
Hello.
And our Assistant Director, and Lydia, are you still Acting Director?
No, I am the measly old Assistant Director now.
Okay, but as just stated, a boffo run as a week or so of Acting Director, and the library didn't blow up, so that's a good thing.
No, but there were two snowstorms.
That was you, that's it, oh, okay.
Yeah, so now we know who to blame for that. Okay.
Mother Nature.
I think that's everybody. Our interim trustee, Joe Sheehan, is due to join us a little bit later.
Joe Greeley.
Joe Greeley.
Joe Greeley. Yes, okay. Joe Greeley will join us shortly. I get it, my Joe's straight. So, we're going to plunge into the consent agenda, and I will accept a motion to accept consent agenda, and once we have a motion and a second, we can take any comments that people have. So, who wants to give the motion? Marguerite Cummings moves in some seconds.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
George.
I'll second it.
Okay. Did anyone have any changes to the minutes, which is the only part we really vote on? I'm not seeing or hearing anybody.
No.
And so, we can go right to the vote. Because it's a virtual meeting, all votes are roll-call votes. So, I'll start with George, how do you vote on the motion?
I agree.
Okay, Sarah? I've lost your video, but... Well, let's go to Marguerite. You vote?
Yes. I accept.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I accept it.
And I don't know what Sarah's issue is, but we would have enough to pass the motion, even if she disappeared, so we have four, so we'll call it successful. Number two on the list is the warrant, and there is no physical presence of the warrant, because it's a virtual meeting. We've been saying this for several months now, anyone who's new. Lydia, is there any correspondence? Or Casey?
I don't think so.
I'm seeing and hearing two shaking heads, so that's a no. That takes us to Old Business. Noise in the library and teen behavior. I imagine that's moot, but Lydia, can you... Or Clayton, you want to have a comment?
Well, I just had a question. I was approached by Kate Teague after the last meeting, wondering, you know, trying to understand, and I'm trying to understand why this has been part of the agenda for so long, and it was actually requested if we could remove it unless, until it becomes an issue that warrants discussion again. She felt that it was casting a negative light on teens and youth in the library, and that's not a light we wish to cast. We want to make sure that teens are always welcome. So, I'm interested if there's any background, why this has been an agenda item, and if maybe we can remove it from future agendas.
Let me suggest this. Charlotte has the history, and for longer ago than Lydia or Casey do, so why don't you talk to Charlotte? If you still think that's a good idea to eliminate it, fine, and if you don't, fine, too.
And based on my conversations with Charlotte before she left, I feel like it's okay for us to make the call, for the Board and the current administration to make the call.
And how would you make the call, Lydia?
I agree with Kate, who's the head of the Children's and Young Adult Department, that it hasn't been an issue in our meetings in, I think, years now. We just have been, unless anyone else remembers otherwise, the entire time that I've worked at the library, it's been on the agenda, and there's never been anything to report, aside from, you know, maybe minor things here and there. I do agree with Kate's point of view about it sort of suggesting negativity before anybody's done anything wrong.
Marguerite, you want to comment?
Perhaps we could change the nomenclature of it, then, instead of noise in the library and teen behavior, we could change it to current issues in the library, because when it comes up, we have no place to actually speak about it. It's new business, it has to be brought up right away. And I don't know how to, what to call it, but when there is disruptive behavior in the library, and there has been, it's something that needs to be discussed right away. It is new business, it has been, there have been teen issues, there have been adult issues, there have been family issues, there have been issues outside the library and the parking lot, and I do believe it belongs on the agenda, that we are aware that it needs to be discussed. And so, I understand, and I agree, that perhaps the wording of this noise in the library and teen behavior is the wrong message, but I think we need to, excuse me, put something in the agenda, so we're forever reminded that this has to be discussed in a Board of Trustees meeting, so that we're aware of what goes on, and I would just like to know about things like that that happened in the library as trustee, not so much with the teens, but things that happened in the library that, you know, are worth noting.
Donna? Donna, you had a comment?
Remember back, yes, I do. Remember back those people that were filming everyone? That was an interesting thing to know about, and would have fallen into this category. Remember when Charlotte was telling us about that?
The First Amendment auditors.
Yes. But that probably wouldn't have surfaced under this item as it's worded.
Yes, yes, yeah. Yes, but if we drew it something like unusual behavior, or, you know, another...
I like the word "issues," and I like the word "behavior." I'm worried if those are the only two words we use, that it might suggest that staff behavior was also being considered here. So... Marguerite, you started the discussion of Old Business. Okay, while you're thinking, Clayton, do you have an idea on what we could relabel this, so it's not stigmatizing, but it allows us to bring up what we think needs to be brought up?
Patron slash non-patron issues occurred, occurring during the month, occurring during the last period, occurring during the previous month. I don't know. Does anyone else have something that they would like to say?
I had asked Clayton.
And I see that Sarah's actually, before you, as you were asking me, Sarah has her hand up, so I wonder if Sarah would like to contribute before.
Go right ahead.
We'll see if you can hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, awesome. Thank goodness. Device number two, here we go. I was thinking that perhaps the wording of this item on the agenda could just be patrons in the library, and then that could be an umbrella term that would include something like, "We had a ton of people through the first week of February," or "Something happened in the children's room, and now we're trying to get Kool-Aid off the floor," or whatever, you know, it would be just a very generic, but it would cover a lot of different topics without having the negative stigma of issues, or incidents, or something along those lines.
Okay, like that.
Anybody want to do something different than that? Okay, not seeing any. Let me make one other suggestion. Maybe move it to the last item under Old Business instead of the first item. Donna, I see you had your hand up.
Yes, and I think Clayton wanted to say something, too. I just thought the phrase "current events" might work.
Clayton, did you have...
Sure, I'll give a suggestion. I know, I was, I liked how this conversation has gone. I think moving into the end of the old business and focusing it on, you know, recent patron behavior, or recent patrons in the library, you know, as Sarah was saying, I think makes a lot of sense, and maybe we can even take this offline and figure out as we draft the next agenda, as long as there's a consensus. I don't think we have to have a vote on agenda items or anything, but it's good to get a sense of what, this has been helpful to understand, what this has helped, what conversations has helped facilitate, and I think, yeah, I'm pleased by the approach everybody's taking. I understand the need to be informed, and, but keep it positive, so that we're not miscasting any of our...
Everybody comfortable with making this the first specific job for our new director, to finalize this based on the input he's received, and we'll see what he landed on in the next agenda comes out.
Sounds good.
Okay, good. I will note for the record that Joe Greeley, our newest trustee, has joined us. And so...
Yep, thank you. Thank you. I apologize for being...
For the full team.
I apologize for being tardy. Thank you.
That's, that's all right. The next thing on the list is Strategic Plan Update, and I'd like to use the Chairman's prerogative to provide some information of what's happened since our last meeting. Let's see, on January 22nd, I had a phone meeting with Bernie and with Charlotte, with the goal of figuring out how to organize all this, and possibly look at timeline. What came out of that, I'd say, is a few things. One is that Bernie was going to take all the ideas that surfaced at that phone call, and come up with a proposal that would be, I think, going to you, Clayton, for what the timing and what the elements would be. Secondly, Charlotte raised the point that the officially-approved guide to planning that we'd used in the last few cycles, she thinks it's not well-regarded by an increasing number of librarians, and so we shouldn't feel bound by it. The third thing was Bernie's proposal did not adhere tightly to the, to a replication of what we did last time, and it seems clear that they're interested in maybe rethinking it. He seems to be favoring more interviews and less reliance on the other data sources we'd used before, and he was also sympathetic to the point that Charlotte raised, which was that the staff has indicated the desire to have a much larger role, and she thinks the staff has more than demonstrated the ability to handle that larger role. So, my guess is that the plan that Bernie comes back to Clayton with will reflect that, and that's the thing we will next see, and that'll also tell us what the trustees are expected to do and not do as part of the larger process. Let me see if, Clayton, have you heard anything from either Charlotte or Bernie on this?
In the last day and a half, two days that I've been here, no, I've not heard anything on this subject yet, so there may be something buried from before, as I'm going through all the notes from Charlotte, but I don't have an update yet on this front.
Okay, that's certainly a reasonable answer. We'll probably be hearing about that last-two-days thing, as often as Joe Biden's press secretary mentions, they've only been there for two-and-a-half weeks. I might suggest that you put a call in, or an email in to Bernie, just to establish the connection, and find out what he's aiming for in terms of getting you next step.
He's on my list.
Does anyone else have any questions, or any information that we should share? I'm not seeing anybody, so then the next thing on the list is the FY21 budget and the mid-year update. The package included the latest numbers, and some of Charlotte's commentary, usual commentary. Does anyone have anything they want to ask about that, or say about that? Marguerite, you're looking like you want to.
Was Charlotte going to come in to discuss this with us at this meeting?
She's going to come in for something else later. We could ask her to come in earlier, if we thought that would be useful.
What was that?
Casey's going to text her whenever we're ready to have her on.
FY22 budget conversation?
Right, that's a separate item.
Okay.
John, if I, John, if I could, during the time that I am on board here, I'm certainly ready, willing, and able to help out. The budget might be something that I might be able to add one or two comments to, both the FY21 and the FY22, so I'll be happy to help, certainly help Clayton in any way that I can, and obviously, I'm at the disposal of the rest of the trustees, so if I can help, the budget might be kind of a primary area that I can add support to.
Thank you, Joe. For those who don't already know, Joe is a past member of the Norwood Finance Commission, and he has also played a treasurer, treasurer support role on the Community Preservation Committee, so he knows how finance stuff works in Norwood, even if he doesn't know the specifics of the library's finances at the moment. It sounds like people would like to have Charlotte available for the discussion on the FY22 budget, which is due to come in. Casey, can you ask her to join us now? And meanwhile, I will, let's see, oh, I can tell everybody that Charlotte had an inquiry into the person at the state organization that is overseeing the MAR, and whether we're complying with the MAR, and she gave me the news on that today, but I'd like, Charlotte, if you could just give us an overview on FY22 budget with emphasis on the MAR stuff.
Yes, so, things look better than they did when I first talked to Tom McQuade. I submitted the personnel budget, but then I received a budget from him, and it had taken all of the line items away for town-wide facilities, including the custodial salaries. So, I sat down and reconfigured the draft submission, and found that it was very close to what I calculated as the MAR. I did submit all of the items that were going to be transferred from our budget to the town facilities, and then I included also the telephone budget, because I had asked Tom to put that back in our budget. You may remember last year, they removed $5,000 from utilities, and they removed 1,925 from telephone at the last minute. In fact, we didn't even realize that had been removed. So, I talked to Tom about that, and told him, "We still have a telephone budget," and he said that we wouldn't be getting the money, that we would be sending all of the invoices to the IT department. So, that was being transferred to the IT department. So, then I was able to send all those figures to Liz Babbitt, and what she did is she, how it worked is, all of those line items, and what they were, were subtracted from each budget year, 18, 19, 19, 20, and 21, and she came up with the document, the numbers that I sent to you today. So, did everybody open that and see the, and I have the numbers in a coral, orangey color that shows you what the draft submission budget is, and what the recalculated MAR is. And the MAR always has to be less than the budget. There's very, there's very little wiggle room here. There's less than $2,000. When I had done my calculations, there was no wiggle room. We were below the MAR, but Liz added in that telephone of 1,925, and took that away from all three years. So, there's a possibility, because she took it away from all three years, she was really only supposed to take it away from FY21, there's a possibility that that will be recalculated again. As a matter of fact, it is not officially recalculated until state aid has already been submitted in October. So, less than $2,000 above the MAR is two problems. One is that if the town decides to lower our budget submission by taking something away at the last minute, which they often do, that will put us below the MAR, and we just, we can't be below, because you don't want to file a waiver. We just don't want to go down that road, and I think everybody understands that, especially Joe, who was with us for the years that we did have to do that. But the second problem with it is that next year, it's the same problem, because every year that you are closer and closer, you are, you end up with having a problem every year if you're not funded approximately 2.5%, and we have not been receiving more than 2.5%. Our COLI, when we have a year where we have 2% COLI, it gives us a little, it gives us that jump, because that's significant, because our salaries are significant. But if it's going to be either 1% or 0%, you're getting dangerously close, and I think the calculation, I haven't figured it out, but I think the calculation for next year, if only a 1% COLI is given, and there are no increases in any of the incidental line items, it's going to be the same problem. Just three years ago, I think it was three years ago, I have that spreadsheet somewhere, just a second. Just three years ago, I believe we were 95,000 above the MAR. The next year, we went down to 55,000. The next year, we went to 36,000. So, that's how quickly you can go down without having any increases in your incidental budgets, or a significant COLI. You probably remember when we had 3% COLIs. There were times, years ago, when we had 7% COLIs, and 4%, 5%, but it's been, it's been three or less for most of my tenure, I would say, and that's the problem, is that without that 2.5% average, you're going to get farther and farther, or closer and closer to the MAR. Obviously, we don't need to be 95,000 over. The reason why we were back in, I think that was in 2019, actually, is because we had finally received some significant increases to our building and service maintenance budgets. Those are all going away at this point, but we had, we were level-funded for those for the last couple of years, because we had received such significant changes in them. What you want to be seeing now, because the materials expenditure requirement will always be going up, is trying to get that materials expenditure requirement fully funded, and that would be in all circulating materials and all digital materials, because, as Lydia knows, we're not fully funded. I'm not quite sure. I think we're about $45,000 short this year, Lydia, of what the materials expenditure requirement is, that we will be needing to spend from state aids, probably less than that, actually. And that's significant, that's, you know, that's a lot of money. Years ago, it was only 20,000 that we had to put into it, and then it became 25, and higher and higher. So, that's what you should probably be speaking to the FinCom liaison and Tom McQuade about, is trying to get the incidentals more fully funded than they are now, and that will give you some increases. All of those building maintenance line items, utilities, and the others that we've received increases in, there was a time when we only received $40,000 for utilities, and we were paying the surplus out of state aid. That 70,000 has gone away, so now you will want to be looking at ways that we have to increase incidentals and salaries. I know that sometimes people don't quite understand, and I just want to clarify it, because John had a question about it the other day, the material, the municipal appropriation requirement, or the MAR, has to be totally funded by the town, has to be the budget that is passed at town meeting. Can't put any other money into it, any money from trust funds, from state aid, from the Friends, or anything. That is the number, that is where it all has to come from. Years ago, it could also come from revolving, but they changed that, oh, probably five or six years ago. So, does anybody have any questions about it, and where I feel the library stands right now? Lydia?
Love you.
Just to update the numbers, yeah, we have, in the materials budget, about... um, about one hundred ninety-five thousand, um, coming from municipal appropriations and about, uh, fifty-two thousand coming from, um, state aid and, uh, other sources.
Now that will change next year because we've lost, um, two hundred and forty thousand or whatever that number is, um, from the budget. So the budget is smaller. So now that we, um, uh, now that, that, um, that budget is, is smaller, you will take twelve or thirteen percent, depending on what you choose to do. Um, there is still is the option to request flexibility. And that materials expenditure requirement will, will be less and, um, but the budget's also less. Um, so you want to take, Lydia will want to really take a look at that this year and find out what that number is and how much extra we have to come up with. The problem with decreasing our materials expenditure requirement, uh, not the requirement, but the expenditures, is that we've been giving patrons what they want. We've been increasing all those digital resources and we've been keeping up with the books. As you know, over the last twenty years, we're having to buy everything in more and more, um, in different formats. And they expect it. So, um, that's another thing that you're gonna, you're going to have to think about is, do you want to just, um, continue pumping money into that, those expenditures from state aid and revolving? Once revolving gets back up this year, of course, is going to be a really bad year because our passport business went down so much and our revolving fund is sort of, um, it, it's keeping, um, sort of even, we're spending only as much as we're making, which is good. Um, and part of that is because we're not spending as much on overage on office supplies and different things because of the fact with, with COVID, our operational costs have been a little bit lower in some, um, respects, although we're still paying that copier, um, uh, lease agreement every single year and not, uh, this year and not getting the money in for it, which is a big expense. So, um, Casey will take a look at all of that because she's, she works with the revolving fund very closely and she'll, she'll know when more money's coming in that can be spent. We can, you can spend from the revolving fund. Um, and that's one thing I wrote to Clayton about is that at town meeting in May, there has to be a statement from the library and accounting about the revolving fund, what was taken in, um, and, and the revenue and expenditures and also what it will be spent on. And the, the wording right now that got written into it several years ago is it can be spent on all library programs, library services, um, and materials. So that money, um, can definitely, um, you know, make up some of the difference. In fact, I think it was FY twenty, we spent a lot of money. We spent a lot of our revolving money, um, on materials, um, beefing up, you know, our, our digital resources. So what's really important is impressing upon the FinCom and Tom McQuade, and Tom understands this, but not quite in detail because it's the library that's supposed to understand the detail. Um, and so we need, you need to let him know exactly, uh, what it is you need. But I would suggest, um, making sure there's more of a cushion than a little less than two thousand dollars. Now, if there is a one percent COLI negotiated before May, has to be negotiated before May because as we know, as Sarah knows, how bad it is when we don't go to town meeting with, with a union contract. What happens is that the town does not appropriate that COLI to us and puts us in a situation of having to wait. And, uh, actually, if state aid is filed in October and there's no town meeting until November, a waiver has to be filed because we don't, the library does not have that funding. So that's, um, very important that as soon as that union contract comes in, and I understand that it's very possible that it could be one percent. It looks like that's what the other unions, um, are negotiating. I don't believe it would be any higher. Um, the one percent will give, um, if you look on the, in the coral, um, or orange highlight on that page, you'll see that it brings the, um, the, um, municipal appropriation up to one million six hundred seventy-four, um, thousand, which is above the MAR, definitely above the MAR by about fifteen thousand. That's a little more comfortable. But thinking ahead, what I always do is I go in and calculate what, what could next year's budget possibly be that would fit? What does it have to be to, to, um, to, uh, work so that we are above the MAR? So anybody have any other questions while I'm here?
I, I, I have a couple. Sarah, I, Charlotte, I have a couple and, and then I'm sure other members do too. Mine are quick. Do we already know who the liaison from the FinCom is for this side?
I don't think we've been assigned one. Joe will tell you there were years when we were not assigned one, but Joe was our sort of unofficial liaison because he understood that the library needed some help. Um, so what I would probably do is somebody should reach out to the FinCom. And we do have a lot of people on the FinCom right now who are very aware of the library's, um, situation and, and not wanting to go down the waiver route. And Judy Langone and, um, um, Alan Slater's still on FinCom and, um, can't remember, um, let's see, Anne, Anne Haley's on FinCom. Yeah. And, and they, that most of them understand, um, that, you know, that we have this requirement and it, and it's, and it's, it's in the Mass Journal law. It isn't something that can be negotiated with the, uh, with the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. Um, it's something that we have to adhere to. And for those of you who aren't familiar, the new trustees, um, filing a waiver is possible. Um, there are, you know, it's a process and it's rather cumbersome process. It's not as painful as, um, being, um, ten percent, um, you have to, um, um, oh, there's the word. It, it can't be a disproportionate cut. If the library shows a bigger cut than the rest of the town departments, then it's called a disproportionate cut. And , uh, in that case, um, everyone has to go in front of the MBLC, um, including the town and everything else. And that's a real painful process. But if you're decertified, no one, not only do you not get state aid, but no one in, in, uh, the state can borrow anything from you and no one in Norwood can borrow anything from any other library in the state. And every library I've seen that has been decertified has then had no problems afterwards because it's very painful and can last up to five years. So we've seen.
Well, I've got, uh, one other pair of questions, kind of build off what you're saying. Um, how much do we get these days in state aid?
Well, this year it's going to be over forty thousand dollars. We just got twenty-one eight, I think. Um, so it'll probably be double that, not quite double. Sometimes the second installment is a little bit more, sometimes it's a little bit less. It's going to depend on, um, it, it needs, there are some libraries that have filed for waivers and some of those may not get certified and get state aid. And so it's a piece of pie that gets divvied up. And it, so what they do is they wait until May, they figure out how it's going to be divvied up and then they give us the rest. And it's generally two somewhat equal parts. So it'll be over forty thousand dollars. This is the best year since two thousand nine for state aid. The, the, you know,
My reason for asking was, I think there may come a time in the discussion when we'll want to be able to say, we need this much to make the MAR. And if we don't, we're putting in jeopardy this amount, which is four times as much as what we're trying to get.
Right.
And that may be more persuasive.
Right. Right. Um,
Let me, let me stop there because I know there are other people who want to ask questions. Donna, I saw your hand.
Yes. Um, Charlotte, could you enumerate all the consequences of a waiver unless it's like endless? Because I think, I remember back when we talked about this last year, that there were people that don't seem to understand that it's a serious thing. And I want to know.
Well, you know, the year that we, we had to apply for waivers twice back in, I think it was eleven and twelve or ten and eleven. The first time there, it was because the, the, um, library had not negotiated a contract with, with the, uh, staff association. The, really the town had not. So therefore, in, by town meeting. So we had to wait until September, I'm not September, November town meeting, uh, in order to ask the town for that money. The problem is, is the state aid application is due in October. So I had to file everything for the waiver. We had to get all the information from the town and all the documentation and, and, uh, and not quite knowing what was going to happen. And then, um, as soon as they have a rule that if you are going to pull that, if you get the money, um, appropriated at another meeting, and it was in November, we had time to pull that waiver, um, documentation. And we went through just as normal because we were, we were above the MAR. The next year, because we were so tight that year, we had a, um, level funded, I think we had zero percent COLI and a fourteen percent. Do you remember, Joe? I think it was fourteen percent. Every, every department had to take a fourteen percent cut?
Sounds about right, yes.
In incidentals. Um, that put us, um, you know, far, that put us below. So we filed, um, a waiver, which is all of that documentation again. And the town accountant has to put documentation together. And, you know, it's a, it's a, it's cumbersome. It's not as painful as getting, having a disproportionate cut. So what happens is the town has to prove that the library has not had a disproportionate cut, has to prove that DPW, police, general government and, um, uh, rec and the senior center. I don't believe it includes the schools. I, that's, I think that's, that is out of the, um, calculation. It doesn't also include the light department and enterprise money and whatnot. And they could prove that that year because every department took a fourteen percent cut. And, um, so we were able to file all the paperwork. We went in front of the, we didn't have to go in front of the board, but they had their board meeting in January. And we, along with, um, a hundred and, yeah, a hundred and fifty other libraries were given waivers. And the legislature, um, had to approve that year that there could be more than ten waivers given because it was the, the, you know, the recession. And it was so bad that libraries were all, all suffering. Towns were all suffering. And we ended up being certified. So we have never been decertified. This library has never been decertified. Um, we never want to be decertified. So that's the process. Um, is, does that answer?
Well, it's wonderful. You said all of that. But what I was getting at, I remember when we talked about this and you were saying that, that Tony didn't seem to quite understand the consequences. And you mentioned a couple of not being able to borrow from outside or to get.
That's, that's if we're not certified. Right. If we're given a waiver, if we're given a waiver, we receive certification and we receive state aid. So, but there's the consequence of possibly not being, of being disproportionately cut. And if we were disproportionately cut, there would be no waiver. Towns have gone in front of the MBLC and tried to explain why they needed to, you know, cut the library's budget more than the other budgets. And they don't, and the library does not get certified.
Let me go to, uh, Sarah next.
The other aspect, again, that Charlotte did mention earlier was that once a waiver's been filed to try to get back up to that MAR calculation in the future, because it's based on the previous three years, becomes a snowball effect of a bigger and bigger gap each time a waiver might need to be filed. So not starting that snowball effect is actually critical. And that's why it's not so easy just to say, oh, well, it's just a waiver. It's just this year. It has so much more impact because then that's one of the years calculated in, but it's still averaged with other years that did make it.
Well, and, and what's calculated, sorry, Sarah, but what's calculated in is the MAR is the, is the, what the, what they told us we had to get. That's, that's what's calculated in. So when you get less than, it's, um, you know, you didn't even get it. And what's calculated in is what you were supposed to get. So that makes it even more difficult. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to add that. I know this is so sobering. Everybody is so.
Let me turn it over. Uh, let me suggest that Joe, that Joe, we add you to the finance committee of the board. And who else is on the finance committee? Remind me. Hold your hand up. Marguerite is, uh, Donna is. That's, I remembered it now. And I think it may have been me, but I'm, I'm going to hold back and put Joe in a slot. And, uh, then this would be the group of three Clayton would be available as a resource for you to help in any way that you, uh, indicate.
And anybody at the MBLC, um, Liz Babbitt is more than happy to give you any financial figures that you need or you can, you know, um, just ask me. Um, so.
Um, the other thing.
Anybody have any other questions for, uh, Charlotte? Joe?
Um, John, thank you for that, um, unauspicious appointment to the, uh, finance committee. Um, how does that go? If nominated, I will not, no, never mind. But I, I appreciate it. As I said before, I think that's probably an area, maybe the, maybe the central area that I can help. Um, but along the lines, somewhere in Charlotte, um, somewhere in your, your description, um, you had also mentioned, um, reaching out to the FinCom and the, the town finance commission and, um, just trying to build that bridge and, um, get some dialogue going. And if, if, if it's okay, and if no one else has done that already, um, I'll be happy to do that.
Yeah, I've talked to Tom and, and Tom, as you know, is very, very aware that we have requirements. And he's the person who in a, um, department head meeting, town manager's meeting said, Charlotte, um, you know, I know that you have some requirements that you need to, to meet. Let's look at your budget. And that's, that's when I got the budget because they had, they had already created the budget for every single department, um, and taken all those line items out. So I'm really, um, I'm glad that I was able to do that in the last, you know, couple of weeks that I was there. So, um, you know, that's a, that's a critical, um, this is a critical change for the library in a lot of ways. Um, you know, losing that two hundred forty-six thousand dollars or whatever it is. And they actually, Tom didn't, they didn't understand whoever was working on it. Um, they didn't understand. They took, um, our night differential away. And our night differential is, is for the professionals in the library. So Tom added that back. And then we went through a couple other, um, a, a couple other, um, line items. Uh, the custodial salaries were higher. They took more money away than the custodians are actually paid. So there's still some wiggle room and I'll be really happy to work with Clayton to point out those areas so that he can make sure, um, that he relays that to the three people on the finance committee. So, um, to make sure that, you know, we just don't want to be so close. It's, it's, you know, it, it's a little, it's a little scary to be so close because you can be fifty dollars below the MAR and have to go through this process. It, it'd be great if there was enough wiggle room. And John, I think you're really right. You know, forty thousand dollars in state aid and to get to increase our budget, you know, by, um, by just a little bit. Now I, somebody also needs to be in contact with Molly because Molly is negoti, going to be negotiating with the staff, with the union and, um, find out. And, um, find out, um, in the union, Kate Tig, um, the rep from the library might be able to keep, you know, will definitely keep Clayton hopefully in the know about what, because that one percent will make a difference. That's, that's about fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars, the one percent COLI. The COLI, if it's one percent, is only on the union, um, the union staff. So that's important to know. It's not all the salaries. Um, it's, it's a bulk of it, but not all of it. So you don't take the salary line item and, and multiply it by a, you know, uh, one hundred and one percent. It's, it's less than that.
So if I could try to sum up where I think we are, uh, Joe is going to work with Clayton to establish appropriate bridges, uh, with the FinCom. And, uh, might go along with Clayton when he picks up the baton that Charlotte has with Tom Quaid. Uh, Sarah, you're the chair of the personnel committee. I'm wondering if you and Clayton could go talk to Molly or talk to Kate or both and sort of see where we are and what we can do to make sure that goes smoothly. Um, please, Sarah, you can comment on that suggestion.
I have already chatted a little bit with Clayton regarding getting on into, uh, a conversation with town hall to make sure that we get this process started soon.
Great. Thank you. Uh, anybody else have any other comments or questions in this area? Okay, not seeing any. Charlotte, we'll need you later. The, um, next thing on the list I have is reports.
You need me later tonight?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm fine with that.
So we're, reports is programming report, maintenance and repair, personnel report. And let me just mention that one of the items that should be covered under personnel, I want to move into an executive session at the end of the meeting. And so at that point, we'll go through a thing of, uh, moving into executive session and moving away from Norwood Community Media. That's standard language. Uh, but there are other personnel items that we can certainly handle in the open session. Casey, please.
Do you want me to continue doing minutes in the executive session or should I leave at that point?
I think it would be useful for you to take notes as you. And I'd also like Lydia to be present for the, um, executive session. Um, does anybody have anything to add to the programming report? Or the maintenance and repair report? And Marguerite, you have a comment? You're muted.
That's a first. I think Clayton should be, uh, at the executive meeting also.
Oh, I just assumed that. But yes, thanks for making sure. Um, okay. Um, I didn't see anybody jumping in with a question or overview comment on programming and maintenance and repair. So it may be the package was completely clear and complete. And, uh, so that takes us to personnel. The things I have to talk about under personnel are, um, Lydia, an update on how we're doing on filling positions? You had some information in the package.
Um, yeah, basically we, um, we're making good progress, um, on, um, both searches. We basically got to a point where we were just waiting for Clayton to start because his, uh, input became essential, um, and he'll be one of the, the people, um, interviewing, uh, candidates for both positions. So we have, um, the adult services position, um, narrowed down to a manageable amount that were, um, of great qualified applicants that we would, um, like to do, do at least preliminary interviews with. And, um, for the, uh, outreach position where we didn't receive as many, um, applications, um, we wanted, uh, uh, Clayton to weigh in and revisit whether we should, um, go with the applicant pool that we have now, or whether we should, um, try reopening the search with a different strategy to get a bigger pool of applicants. Um, but I've already, um, kind of briefed Clayton on that and he'll be looking at the unredacted, um, resumes and the cover letters. And, um, then we'll, and he'll also be, um, chatting with HR, um, in the next week or so about various things. Um, so we'll plan the next steps and we should be interviewing soon.
That sounds good. Hope for good news, uh, in a month. Uh, or more good news, I should say. Uh, the other thing I had under personnel was just general comments on this transition. Uh, we've been bringing up a lot of transition stuff as the meeting went on and I wanted to provide an opportunity, if Clayton, you had or anyone else had any comments on transition related matters that haven't come up yet.
It's wonderful to be, you know, actually on this side of the transition and be, you know, coming in. I, I met with Sarah. I saw Marguerite today. Um, and I don't have any detailed things to say. You know, we've got a computer set up. We're doing, you know, just kind of getting, I, I moved a bunch of boxes into the office today from my former office. So, um, I'm still unpacking and getting systems rolling and um, setting up appointments so that I can figure out what questions need to be asked. I don't have answers anywhere close to them yet, but I'm forming a list of questions. So.
Sounds very normal.
Very welcoming. And it's, uh, it's been a delightful process so far. It's a, it's an honor to take Charlotte's size, uh, seat and to be sitting in that gorgeous office. So.
Uh, Charlotte, it looks like she's got a pretty comfortable chair right there. So. Everybody comes out a winner. Okay, the next thing on my, is new business. And the first. I'm sorry. Did someone say?
Um, yeah.
Okay, please.
Me? Um, okay. Uh, since we're still on, um, personnel, um, I have an update that, um, the uh, union has contacted, uh, Molly Keen regarding negotiations. Um, they're trying to get a late February start date, um, and, um, we don't have a commitment on that. Um, town will have to approach, um, the union officially for negotiations to start.
You think that'll happen in a timely fashion or are you nervous?
Um, I, I'm not sure what to think. Uh, I know Molly's probably very, um, busy since she's, um, going to be on leave as of, I think, uh, April first. Um, but, um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not really sure. This is kind of, um, new information that, uh, they were even approached.
Okay, uh, Charlotte, you have something to say on that?
Yeah, she did. She did tell me she was planning on having all the contracts, uh, signed and negotiated by April first. So.
That's good. And, uh, Sarah, you had a comment too?
Well, I, I will reiterate with respect to that, that Clayton and I will be reaching out to Molly directly to get this ball moving so that we can do our part to get the contract negotiated in a timely manner. Um, the second thing was I was going to actually make the motion to move the rest of the personnel into executive session for the sake of some contract negotiation discussions that cannot be dealt with in open meeting.
Okay. And, uh, that will occur after the rest of the, uh, agenda excluding adjournment has occurred?
Correct.
Okay, uh, we have a second for the motion? Uh, Donna, I'll see you first.
Second.
Any comment, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none. Uh, we'll go through, roll call. George?
Hi.
Marguerite?
Hi.
Donna?
Hi.
Uh, Joe?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
And I vote aye. So that's what we'll do. Uh, any other personnel matters other than those that have been delayed? Seeing none. This takes us to new business. And the first item is, I'm sorry, Marguerite, did, did I jump ahead?
Yeah, somehow, um, friends fell off the reports. Casey, can we have that put back onto the agenda that friends goes into the reports as D?
Um, Clayton will be the one creating the agenda, but I will put it in the minutes so he knows that.
Okay.
So would you like to say something about friends here? Is that what you said?
Actually, Lydia's been working on something about the friends. Lydia did a lot of work on the, uh, getting a, a book sale underway. Lydia, do you want to talk about that?
I'm sure, just a few things. Um, yeah, at our, the last meeting that we had, we talked about, um, getting the book sale carts up and running again on an honor, uh, system with, um, with a, um, a lockbox. And, um, we made that happen. Um, we ordered a, a lockbox and it came in, um, right away and, um, Jim bolted it to, um, one of our old carts and it just happens to match the cart perfectly. The gray color just happened to match the cart that we were using and um, Jim even touched up the paint. So it looks like it was brand new. And, um, Nicole Garakun made, um, signage with the braces and everything. And, um, stocked the cart. Uh, we just have one now. We might add, um, a couple more. There's a sign , um, telling folks that, um, what the prices are and that they can put the money in the box. And Casey has agreed to check the box, uh, every week or so. And, uh, we're not really worried about, uh, it being on the honor system. You figure, um, if for anybody that walks away with a book, uh, unintentionally, um, or intentionally somebody else is going to put in over and above what they, what they owe. So, um, we're glad to get that back up and running. Additionally, we got another check for a hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-six cents from Better World Books where we send, um, a lot of our, uh, discard, discards and donations that we're not putting in the sale. And, um, we're doing another, um, Chateau Restaurant fundraiser where, um, they agree for a certain day, anyone who, um, gets takeout or eats in at the restaurant and mentions the fundraiser, um, they, they'll give a portion of the proceeds to the Friends of the Library for that, um, purchase. So on, we managed to land St. Patrick's Day. So on March, um, what's St. Patrick's Day, seventeenth? Wednesday, yeah, on Wednesday, March seventeenth, um, there'll be one, another one of those. Um, and we have a lot of time to get the word out and, um, and market that. And as you know, the Chateau is, um, mainly an Italian and American kind of restaurant, but apparently they are having some kind of, um, specials on the menu for St. Patrick's Day.
Green pasta. Thank you, Lydia. That, that sounds exciting. Uh, anything else on personnel or friends or? Uh, not seeing anything. So now we go to new business. And the first item is the draft annual report. Uh, that was in the package. Um, it, it looked very good to me. Did anyone else have any comments? And is there a deadline, Charlotte, for when you need to hear comments about? What's that deadline?
Um, I won't be able to make the edits because I don't have access, uh, to, um, where it is, the, where the Word document is any longer. So, um, I had written to Casey and Clayton and Lydia and asked them to make the edits. And it needs to be submitted to the open folder, uh, which is, uh, on the town server. The letter with the specifications, um, uh, is in, uh, annual reports FY, uh, I mean, twenty twenty, Casey. And that has the deadline. The deadline is sometime, uh, this month, but I think the best thing to do is just get it in there as soon as possible, as soon as you can make any edits. And if there aren't any edits, just upload it as it is.
Yeah, Charlotte walked. On Charlotte's last day, she, um, walked me through the files on the computer and showed me exactly where we have to upload the final draft. And, um, it's pretty much ready to go. I actually did a final pass through and I sent, um, Clayton some edits today that were, um, it's basically just some minor typos and, and things like that. Nothing that, um, needs to be discussed. Um, so unless there's anything else that you, that you all see, um, that needs to be changed, uh, we're pretty much ready to go with it.
What's important is the printer needs the original JPGs, which are also in the folder on, in library annual reports, twenty twenty. So, um, that way they don't have to come back to us if there's any problem with the resolution that's actually in the document.
Would it be, um, convenient to everybody if we set a deadline of close of business Friday for us to get any edits we might have into your hands? I'm looking at Clayton and Lydia.
That seems reasonable to me. You know, uh, the sooner we can do it. Unless, Charlotte, you think we should do it faster?
I'm not sure what the deadline is. I think it might be around the twentieth, but it's possible that it's the fourteenth. So what I would do is open up that letter that's in there. I, I think I might have put a copy out in your file, Clayton, that you probably haven't even had a chance to look at, but, um, that would be the best thing to do is open up that letter and see what the deadline, what the date is. I didn't look it up before I lost my access. So, um, I just, I, I would, I would get it in the sooner the better, just to have it in there. Most of the other departments get them in fairly quickly. So you'll, you'll see that probably the other departments are all in there already.
Well, I'm also looking at the other trustees to see, um, like if we set a deadline of tomorrow, would that be too soon? And I'm getting a reaction that says that would be. So why don't we make it Friday? And if, when you check the folders, if you find that that's really too tight for the final deadline, send us all an email and give us a new deadline. And we'll rise to the occasion.
I can do that.
Marguerite?
Are you saying you want us to read it and send you any edits that, that we think that need to be done?
Not send it to me. Send them to Clayton or Lydia.
I don't think it has to wait until Friday. It's, it's, it's easy, it's an easy read. I, I mean, it has to be done. If, if, if it's something that should be in the, in town hall before Friday, before, you know, I think that, you know, we should get it done before then.
Well, let's say everybody shoot for Wednesday, but absolutely by Friday. That way, if everybody gets theirs in tomorrow or then we'll be fine, but we, but they won't panic if it doesn't happen.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, good. Um, circulation and library statistics, twenty twenty, anything anyone wants to say about those? It's all in the package.
Can I just say that was a lot of work and it looked great? Thank you very much.
Ditto. Um, then the next thing, candidates seeking election to board. Um, I, I know George, you were pulling, uh, signatures. Have you, are you all good to go?
Just about. I have to get a couple of insurance just to make sure, but I'll be, it'll be in before the end of the week. So.
And Shannon, I think, uh, was also flocking along. I don't have anything updated from her.
Yeah.
Mary has. Mary Paz was, uh, a bit more complicated because, uh, we had this feedback last time about, uh, the problem if she maintained her part-time employment. And, uh, conversations, uh, she's indicated that she has resigned, uh, her position with the library and will be going ahead to run as a candidate.
I can confirm that. I have seen that paperwork and signed off on it.
Great. Thanks, Clayton. Um, and Donna?
Um, wasn't there some discussion, um, because of the situation with Mary Paz about making some kind of rule about soliciting signatures inside the library or something like that, some kind of bylaw thing that we had to do?
Uh, I,
Marguerite?
I believe that the, uh, issue is that, uh, if you were running the, as the Massachusetts state law was that if you are running for a position in the library, uh, if you're running for a position on the board and you're working in the library, you cannot use, um, you cannot conduct political activity on, in, during library time. So it's, it's, the issue is if you're working, if you're running for election, you cannot get signatures while you're working in the library. That's one phase of it. The second phase of it is, uh, of that law was that if you are working, it, once you, you could be seen, not only, um, would you be using uh, time in the library, political time, I mean, public time to get your signatures, it could be seen as you wielding undue influence over people to get your signatures, that they would be afraid not to sign your papers. So that is another aspect of you trying to get signatures when you work at the library or you're running for office and you are a member of the board or you're trying to be a member of the board. So this, it's two-pronged. If you go forward and you get a seat on the library, on the board, and you are working in the library, the issues with that are that there are certain aspects, um, uh, of sitting on the board where you would not be able to vote. Would not be able to vote on anything that uh, influence with it, that would represent your department over another department. If we were to say, you know, okay, we vote to, you know, um, you know, um, get new rugs in the children's department and somebody worked in the literacy department and, well, they wanted rugs, they might vote against it, or they might say, well, literacy, it's everything. I mean, children's gets everything and we don't, they maybe, that might not happen, but I'm just using that as an example. So they would not be, uh, asked to vote for that. That might not be an issue all the time, but it could rep, it could become an issue if there was a need for a quorum and, uh, that person wasn't able to vote. It also could be an issue for the person, uh, an ethical dilemma for the person who works in the library and is on the board. They would have to use great restraint. And, um, not to discuss anything that was said on the board with their fellow, um, peers. And they would not be able to have a collegial, um, relationship with their peers as far as, um, you know, uh, talking about things that, uh, people do in the course of, um, the day. You know, uh, being upset with somebody and discussing it or asking you, 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 you wouldn't be able to do that. Also, you wouldn't be able to say to somebody, you know, I, could you swap time with me? Then people might think, oh, I better swap time with her because if I don't, she's on the board, it won't look good for me. So there are a lot of the ethical dilemmas that would come up for that person. And, um, they're pretty clearly written. And, um, the imperative for, um, full disclosure of, of what you're doing at all times is before the board. Um, there's eyes on you all the time when you're doing the duality. So it's a tough situation. It's a tough situation for the board. It's a tough situation for your peers, but it's a very tough situation for the person that chooses to do those two things. And that's about enough out of me.
Uh, Donna, I think your question was whether we had work to do on the bylaws to address this matter. And the answer seems to be that no, because the state already has enough, uh, settled regulation laws and such, that nothing more is needed from us. Is that fair to say?
I, I think it would be worth it to put a line in, in the, um, bylaws that we stand by the, you know, that we recognize the, um, the laws of the, the Massachusetts state laws that govern running for the, uh, for the election, uh, running and working. I, I think it does, it, 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 uh, I think we should have something in the bylaws just to say that it's there. So if somebody asks us.
That I learned early on was anybody who suggests a job gets the job. So, uh, Marguerite, could you, uh, look at the bylaws, make a draft of suggested change?
I think Donna suggested that.
Has been addressed, it's moved for the short term. And we'll, uh, pick it up whenever that, uh, presents itself.
All right, yeah, okay, done. Done.
Um, anything else on the, uh, candidate seeking election? Seeing none, we're up to search warrants. Casey, were there any search warrants? Nope. Miscellaneous advisories? Nope. Uh, so we're up to staff, public and trustee remarks, which is where, um, mostly people talk about what they're reading. And I think I'm going to put these two together and just ask people for, uh, comments or what they're reading in order as they appear on my screen, which means Casey, you're up first. What you been reading?
Uh, I've been filling another bingo square for Winter Bingo, which our adult service librarian Liz has been running this winter. Um, this month I decided to do a true love story because it's Valentine's Day coming up. So I read One Day in December by Josie Silver. It's a really light, sweet read. Um, it's a modern romance, so it's not quite as heavy as some other paperbacks. Um, it's definitely enjoyable and I would definitely recommend it. And if you're not already doing bingo, pick it up at adult services.
Uh, George, what about you?
Um, well, actually, uh, with all the late, uh, the new superhero movies and the, the, the non-stop streaming and coming out, I decided to try to catch up, uh, with my kids. Um, I've been reading the, you'll appreciate this, John, the Avengers Ultimate Character Guide. And, um, yeah, um, it's, it's, it's quite the read and I have a lot to learn still, so I'll keep working on it.
Man, I remember when there were seven Avengers and
That was it. I know, I know. And now every time some new appears on the screen, all of a sudden it's, oh, that's so-and-so. Ooh.
Well, welcome to the fan club. Uh, Marguerite, what you been reading?
Already a great book. Um, it was the one that I got quickly from the library, Shugi Bain. And, uh, it was written by Douglas Stewart and it was about a, a young boy who, um, had a great love, uh, for his alcoholic mother and took very good care of her from the age of two till she, um, well, I won't, till, uh, he grew into his teen years. And, uh, it was a very, uh, sad story that had just this wonderful love story that he had for her throughout the whole book. But it was a very tender, sad story and tough story about growing up in Scotland, uh, being poor and marginalized. So this kind of story it was. I liked it.
Good, thank you. Kate, you want to offer reading?
Uh, I'm reading Australian author Jane Harper's fourth book that just came out. It's a mystery. I loved the first three and so far the fourth one is not disappointing me.
Excellent. Uh, Donna, what are you reading?
Uh, I'm going to mention two books. I'm reading James Comey's new one, Saving Justice, which is wonderful. And I read The Talented Miss Farwell by Emily Gray Tedrow, which is about a woman who works for a small town government and manages to embezzle millions of dollars. This is fictional, but it's based on um, a real person, the woman, the author found out about this real person and decided to write a book about it. And so she's living one life as a responsible citizen doing everything in this small town and another life in a big city with fancy clothes and a different uh, name, although it's her name, it's a fancy nickname, you know, and, um, she buys all this hard work and sells it and steals money and buys more and oh my goodness. And of course she eventually gets caught and she's still trying to manipulate the whole system. It's amazing.
Clayton?
So I, uh, had a week, uh, between Quincy and here and I finished, uh, four books in that time and, uh, finished and, and started a, a fifth or made some good progress. So I won't tell you about all four of them, but I'm, I'm happy to talk, like, there was some fiction. Uh, there was some nonfiction, there was a great graphic novel. Um, the, the piece that I'm working read in, and I want to tell you about tonight is, uh, uh, the third in a series of memoirs by this great, uh, Kenyan author Ngunguji Watheunga, and it's, uh, Birth of a Dream Weaver, A Writer's Awakening. If you're not familiar with Watheunga's, um, work, he's a playwright, he's written some great, uh, nonfiction and, uh, and, and some great fiction as well. He's, he's a, an African star for sure. And, uh, it's really fun reading about his time, um, you know, as, as a young man going to college and his kind of, uh, I don't know, it's, it's when he kind of came into his own. And so it's, it's a fascinating real life story. I, I recommend his work highly.
Thanks. Can I ask what the graphic novel is that you read?
Sure. I read Odessa, um, which is, um, I didn't realize, I, I can talk about it. It's, uh, it's not a capes and, uh, and suit and, and flying kind of graphic novel. It's a apocalyptic story of a, uh, some siblings searching for their mother who they've not seen for many years, who is, um, uh, it's, it's post-apocalyptic, but everybody's still surviving and it's this kind of Mad Max world that this, uh, that these, so it's a couple of young boys and their older sister are exploring in, in, outside of San Francisco and then they go into San Francisco and go further south. So.
Sounds good, too.
Yeah.
Lydia, what about you?
Um, well, I just finished American Predator, The Hunt for the Most Meticulous Serial Killer of the Twenty-First Century by Maureen Callahan. And I loved it. I was riveted. It was very well-written. And, uh, in my defense, I, it's a very popular genre. I'm not the only one who loves true crime. I know it's not for everyone.
You're not the only one on this call who likes true crime. So, okay, good. Uh, Sarah? Sarah, can you? You're frozen. Ouch. Uh, go around Sarah for a moment. Joe, what have you been reading?
Um, well, I did, when Marguerite told me that this would be on the agenda, um, I did tell her I've been reading a lot of trail maps, um, but that, that didn't quite fly. Um, but, uh, two things I, I just want to put a plug in. This isn't exactly a, it's a, it's not a, it's not a novel, but, um, I did, I was looking forward to the, um, to the release of a, uh, Netflix movie recently called The Dig, D I G, The Dig. Um, I would strongly recommend it. It's a, it's a drama based on a, a book by, um, John Preston. Um, very, I definitely highly recommend it. Uh, it's definitely not a book. Um, but the one, the last book I finished, uh, finished it over the, uh, over my winter break. Um, it's a book called Dare to Fly. I had to grab it just so I quoted the right, um, the right information. It's called Dare to Fly, Simple Lessons in Never Giving Up. And it's written by Martha McSally, who's, uh, she just lost her seat in the US Senate, um, in Arizona. Um, Martha is actually, I've met Martha a few times, but the book is, um, it is truly a book about never giving up and it's, gives a lot of the detail that, um, goes on, it went on in her life as she rose through the ranks of the United States Air Force. She became, um, the first fighter pilot in the United States Air Force. Um, I do happen to know Martha, I'm friends with her sister, and I'll just read the endorsement of the, um, on the, on the fly. Um, it says, um, written by Martha, Dare to Fly. And she wrote in my book, Joe, Take a Hike. Young wingman Martha McSally. So this is my favorite book today.
Someone who knows you.
Thank you.
And Sarah's back unfrozen. So Sarah, what did you read?
Well, what's funny is you guys all froze on my end here and I was thinking, oh no, I'm gonna have to leave and come back into the meeting again. Um, so I have been working on two different sort, sort of books. One is On Care for Our Common Home by Pope Francis. And that's one that we're going to be working on as sort of a study with a group of other people in terms of how to do better stewardship for the earth, the animals, the environment and each other too, for that matter. Um, so that should be a very interesting and thought-provoking. Hopefully get some action out of that in the service realm as well. And the other is, um, that I've spent quite a bit of time reading through is Inside the Yoga Sutras by Reverend Jagannath Carrera. And that is going through and looking at the different scriptural passages that help create the backbone of yoga. Little bit different than Lydia's books.
Both sound great. Uh, Charlotte, since you're back with us, what you been reading?
Well, I had the experience of putting a book on hold before I left so that I would have it on Monday. And, uh, the library wasn't open Monday, my branch library here. Um, and Tuesday I went, um, and drove there and found out they were closed due to a water problem, which was very disappointing because I had no way to get in and get the book. And, um, I finally, I did pick it up on Wednesday and it's called The Residence. And it, I think it's, I don't know how old it is. I want to say it's between five and 10 years old and it's about, um, the, um, the people who have lived in the White House. So it's kind of a lightning book. And I've really just gotten a few, well, about 20 pages in because I've been trying to keep my husband from being eaten, whoops, where is this? By the alligator in the pond behind the house. And, um, he got a little too close the other day and freaked me out to take this, um, to take this close-up photo. And I've walked the dog, uh, twelve and a half miles since last Monday. And I spent the entire day signing up for Medicare B. And also, um, fa, filling out all my retirement paperwork and trying to get it printed on our new printer. So I've been spending a lot of time just, um, um, you know, doing things that I now have time to do. But I, I liken it a little bit to, I'm, the, I, this morning I was, um, talking to a friend about it and I said, it's kind of like being at a buffet and you're not really sure you're hungry every day because you wake up in the morning, you think, oh, all these things I can do, but really not sure if I want to do them. So it's kind of a, it's kind of an interesting, aimless um, feeling that I have this week because I had a lot of stuff to do last week. So anyway, I haven't been reading and I'm sure Clayton is going to really enjoy the book discussion group at the library and put both Marge and Deana Delick to shame because they were always the star readers. It sounds like, it sounds like you might be, um, outreading them. So that'll be interesting. Be great suggestions for the rest of the staff. So anyway, I'm, I'm having a lot of fun.
Good, good. I'm gonna offer a, uh, graphic novel series that I've gotten into. Um, it's It's titled The Other History of the DC Universe. DC is Batman, Superman. And it's basically, it's like black history. They've picked a couple of mid-level black characters and marvelous writing. This is what their lives and careers that we've read about in the comics felt like to them and how they were treated and such. The first issue, this is, these are oversized and they're, they're thick. The first issue was Black Lightning, who has his own TV series. The second was a couple of very minor characters who were part of the Teen Titans. If anyone has ever been interested in the DC Universe or racial issues in comics, I heartily recommend it. It's so well-written and it's well-drawn. It has a different kind of art approach. It's like halfway between comic book and illustrated story. So it's interesting to me for that. And with that, I think we are ready for a motion. And Sarah, you know the magic words.
I didn't realize we were needing the specific magic words this evening, but I will make a motion for us to move into executive session for the purposes of discussing contract issues that cannot be discussed in open session. And we will only return to open session at the end of executive session for the purposes of adjournment.
Second for them? Please, Donna, yes? Okay, I'm now going to take roll call vote. George?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Donna?
Yes.
Yes. Joe?
Joe Greeley, aye.
And Sarah?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.